For the meeting to begin, we will call the meeting to order with the invocation and pledge being by Mr. Lesse Yip, Vice Chairman.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask that you give us wisdom and direction so that we may represent our constituents in the best possible way, and we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly beings, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on our agenda is the recognition of employee service awards, the employees that are the, without question, the heart, soul, and backbone of this county. And so first, we have Samantha Navarrete, five years. Josh Graham, five years. Congratulations, thank you for your service. Come over and this side for me. And Jessica Addaway, ten years. Working, alright. So they left and made you the star of the show. Thank you, sir.
Josh, hold your certificate up, like, right there, right.
Cover that up, your shirt.
Thank you so much. I do, I know I say it every time that we do employee recognitions, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart. It is the backbone of this county, and we're so grateful. Item number two on our agenda, public appearances, first is the Palmetto Trail, Furman Miller.
So I'm gonna come up.
Okay.
So I'm Jessie. Thank y'all for letting us be here tonight. We are recognizing our awesome partners that help us with Lynch's Woods Park. So we are recognizing Palmetto Trail and Palmetto Conservation. So with us tonight is Furman Miller with Palmetto Trail and Kylie Sheehan with Palmetto Conservation. And she's also over the AmeriCorps group that does a lot of work out there as well in collaboration with Palmetto Trail. And then also, our other partner is Midland Sorba, which is the Southern Off-Road Bicycle Association. And we have with us Eric Lemoine and Nathan Hunter. And then could not be here tonight is Danny Rains. And I'm recognizing all these guys because you will see them out at Lynch's Woods Park, ladies, more than you will probably see some of my staff. And so we are eternally grateful to them because Lynch's Woods Park would not look as good as it does without their support and their volunteer time that they give us. So we just wanted to make sure we recognize them. So Furman is gonna come up and do a presentation, and then if y'all will allow us, we do wanna take some pictures so that they can do some marketing and stuff as well. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Furman Miller. I'm a regional coordinator for the Palmetto Trail. Palmetto Trail was established in 1994 with a vision of having a cross-state hiking and biking trail. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come to speak to you a little bit tonight. Before I get started, I have a quick promotional video that I would like for you to see. Every one of those images you saw came off of the Palmetto Trail as part of its stretching. Like I said, it's a 500-mile passage from Awandaw on the coast and terminates into the mountains right now, currently it's in the city of Wauhalla. Out of the 500 miles, we've got about 400 miles of it open. The trail was constructed in a series of passages, passages varying from like two miles to 48 miles, a lot of times depending on geography or leases or such. Newberry County actually has four passages of the Palmetto Trail inside the county. I began work on the Palmetto Trail in 2004. I'm a native here, I was born, raised in Newberry, graduated Newberry High School, Newberry College. I started working on the Palmetto Trail in 2004, and at that time, there was already a passage in Lynch's Woods, and there was already a passage up in Enery. We started the Peak to Prosperity Passage, and we did the ribbon cutting for that in 2009, I believe. That passage has become one of the most popular in the entire system. So that gave us the third one, and then in 10 years later, 2019, we did the ribbon cutting for the Newberry Passage, which was a combination urban and rural, takes people through downtown Newberry, the historical section, and it was done on purpose because a lot of people who hike the entire trail, when they leave Spartanburg, the next place they see is Newberry. It's a long way to go, hikers like to have, and bikers like to have zero days, so Newberry's a perfect place for a zero day. They come in, you know, they wanna take a shower, sleep in a bed, refresh their supplies or whatever, so they're here in our area spending those ecotourist dollars. So it's become very beneficial to us and all. Well, when we did that, we decided that our Lynch's Woods Passage, which basically ran the length of the park, there's nothing in Lynch's Woods that's not pretty, there's nothing that's not beautiful. So in an effort to try and, you know, take advantage of that whole thing, we took the Lynch's Woods Trail and made it a loop. So now it's about a four-and-a-half mile loop, and it starts and ends right next to the picnic shelter, and it takes you through the entire park. We started work on there, we collaborated with the Midland Sorba group, we actually shared some trail through there and everything, and the opportunity to come and do that and put that in there was just from us, from me being a native and from the Palmetto Conservation Foundation. The support was great, support was wonderful. We continued to work on the trail, we will be out there Friday, as a matter of fact, to finish marking the Equestrian Trail, which we went in and cleaned up and improved, as well as we're doing initial foundations for a new bridge to cross around the creeks there, it's a little steep on the sides. So on behalf of Palmetto Conservation Foundation, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to come in and have these trails and the support we get while we're out there. We're a very small organization, so we couldn't get this work done without the cooperation and support of different groups. We work with Boy Scouts and churches and schools and businesses, just all over the place to get the stuff done, and it's really important to have that. Also, before I leave, I want to address our AmeriCorps program. The Palmetto Conservation Foundation has partnered with AmeriCorps to create the only trail-based AmeriCorps program in the entire country. So these young folks come in and we certify them for change, solid teaching willingness, first aid, you know, trail building, trail maintenance, fire prevention, invasive species, we just go through the huge educational program for them that encourages them to, you know, pursue an environmental type of career afterwards. We provide them with transportation lodging, they get a little stipend, and when they complete their service, they then get eligible for a scholarship. I have Ms. Kylie Sheehan with me today, she is the supervisor of these young folk when they're out there on the trail working and all. She was a former AmeriCorps individual and liked it so well down here, she decided to leave Connecticut and live in South Carolina for a little while, so can't blame her for that. But anyway, overall, in conclusion, the opportunity to do this and work here and to bring this asset, the Palmetto Trail here to the county, especially with the four passages, you know, we've just got a little section left in here between Prosperity and Newberry to try and finish, and it'll be continuous throughout the county. And we're just grateful for the support that we've been getting all around, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and give you a little bit of a, you know, commercial and talk to you about the Palmetto Trail, especially here in the county. If there are any questions or anything, my card is in with the information you've got, the brochure's there, and feel free to contact us anytime at all, and we'd be glad to do what we can to promote the Palmetto Trail and this glorious state within it. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. Furman, before you go, would you share with council the numbers from the user numbers in the Peak to Palmyra Trail in particular?
Certainly, the Peak to Prosperity Passage is probably one of our more popular, and we put a trail counter on there. We had such a huge number of people to come out during the pandemic. We managed to keep the trail open during the pandemic, people could get outside because they were going stir crazy, they could get out, you had plenty of room, you're outside, you could do your distance and then everything. We had such an exponential increase in those, we put a trail counter on the bridge at Austin, and according to the numbers right there, last year we saw over 75,000 people cross that bridge. So it definitely has the potential for a huge impact here, not only for, you know, the county and all, but the economy as well. So, there's a lot of people out there, and I'm looking forward to seeing all y'all out there at some point in time.
One question, I know you're probably not the one to make these decisions, but just a question, I was on council when this came to be, when it started back in 94, and there was a lot of opposition locally by landowners that had joined the trail. And anyway, going back even a little further, well, not further than that, but I know that some of the landowners have tried to harvest their timber, and they will not allow them to cross the trail without. Dr. Joe Smith, which he's deceased now, but his family had to put a lawsuit up against the Palmetto.
Dr. Smith was trying to build a building on the right-of-way of the railroad, and what essentially has happened in that particular section, just a quick lesson which I learned sitting in federal courtroom twice, is the railroad purchased that property for their rail line back in 1848, and it included a 100-foot boundary on either side of center line. Then the railroad, when they discontinued the rail use, they banked it, which essentially says if they wanna come back and buy it, they can. But they banked it, and you can bank it under the Rails to Trail Act to be used as a recreational corridor. So the Palmetto Trail wound up with purchasing that right-of-way. So we, as an organization, now operate on manage, whatever word's appropriate, that 200-foot wide corridor. We have to manage it such that if the railroad ever comes back, there's nothing there that could interfere with them creating or opening back up for a railroad. So as far as timbering goes, we've always, we've worked with Mr. Johnson up there at Hope Station, we've worked with folks who wanna come in and cut timber and cut inside that 100-foot. What we can't do is allow anything permanent. And that was the biggest issue with Mr. Smith there in Peak, he wanted to build a building, and he could have built it 100, outside the 100-foot, which would have been fine, he wanted to put it right, essentially exactly where the old depot was, on the other side of where depot was, which was inside the 100-foot, and we couldn't do that. We are enjoined by the federal court to protect that 200-foot right-of-way for future use. So as far as timbering and all, that's, you know, back and forth is what the timber does. So I don't think we've ever denied anybody the right to come in and harvest timber. They can't clear-cut to the edge of the trail, I mean, then you got a sidewalk. But as far as the timbering and all, those are all individual, dealt with in individual instances, I believe. So, and like I said, that's, I heard all that in the federal court, so I would happen to be a bystander there to see what was going on. But the issue was that the judge basically says that 200-foot right-of-way has got to be maintained, and as an organization, you maintain that, and so nothing permanent. And if you wanna cross it, that's fine, we've got crossing agreements, everything, we have several landowners along the Peak to Prosperity Passage that have land on both sides, and they have to get across, and that's not an issue there, that's just making sure you get it documented. That answer your question?
Pretty much.
Okay, alright.
I think Jessie wants a photo op before we go, so...
Oh, I didn't have a question, but Furman, I just wanna tell you, thank you for all those many years of devoted service.
Enjoy doing it.
That you have put into this that's so good for our state and our county.
Certainly gives a lot of use, so I'm glad to do it, thank you.
Sorry about that, I didn't see you speaking, I apologize. Anybody else? Now, come on up.
It's a great thing to you and the general landlord.
I'm sure. There's probably a plenty at that point.
They weren't happy about it.
Nope, you're perfect, I can see very well, I'm gonna take one here, there you go, Nathan, chin up.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Next on our agenda, we have Newberry Soil and Water Conservation, Tony Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity for me to come and give you some highlights of what's happened so far in 2022 with the district. In May, we partnered with DNR, Quell Forever, South Carolina Forestry Commission, and RCS, and held a field day at Belfast Plantation where landowners learned about managing their forest land. In June, of course, we had camp conservation, that's our biggie. Thirty-seven students, ages six to 12, participated in a week-long camp to learn about nature, wildlife, soil, they toured the water treatment facility, and other fun activities held at Wilson Farm in Silver Street. We appreciate him letting us use that farm. In August, the Keep Newberry Beautiful Summer Fair took place, we're very proud of that, we had it for four days. Appreciate your sponsorship, we had approximately 10,000 attendees. Enjoy the rides, the games, the community, and retail vendors, food fair, farm, fair food, and music from local bands. In hopes of being an annual tradition, the fair raises awareness of our community, our business, and our programs. We appreciate your sponsorship for that. This past weekend, in partnership with Keep Newberry Beautiful, had the fourth annual Lakeside Litter Sweep took place at Dreher Island State Park. Approximately 300 volunteers, excuse me, registered to clean islands and land around Lake Murray. Dive teams brought in 900 pounds. At Dreher Park, 29 volunteers collected 1,140 pounds of litter and 30 pounds of recyclables. The feral hog program with USDA monitors damage caused by hogs in our county, and they do a lot of damage. Then they trap and eradicate the invasive species. So far, 580 hogs have been removed on 9,561 acres in Newberry County. This is only 25 participating owners, so that's a lot of hogs on a few farms. The program goes through September of 2023, and we are actively seeking more participants. Our annual banquet will be held November the 17th at the Country Club of Newberry, and invitations will be mailed, and you are all invited. Any questions, comments?
Thank you so much for that well-done report.
Thank you.
Not a question, but once again, thank you so much for the county fair bringing that back and sponsoring that, and y'all did an absolutely wonderful job with that.
Thank you.
Including the first responders, the emergency services, and everybody in the county with that, that was, that was great, thank you.
It was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda, which consists of the Newberry County Council meeting minutes of September 7th. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Sheeley, second by Mr. Scurry, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number four, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Hip, is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, it carries unanimously. Okay, just making sure. Item number five on our agenda is ordinance number 07-20-2022, which is an ordinance for the purpose of leasing out certain county fairgrounds property. We have two items listed on this, however, before I open the public hearing, I wanted to say and make council aware and address some concerns, I got some, a call earlier this week that where this was going was where the original plans under the one-cent sales tax would have placed the fire station, and there were some concerns that if this goes there, it would adjust where the fire station would go, which could result in additional costs for land prep, additional costs for having to resituate that on the property. I did speak with the county administrator, there was a, there was $100,000 in that project for destruction, demolition of these buildings in the previous, in the fire department project, is that correct?
That's from memory, but that's what I would call.
Okay. So that money could then be moved over to land prep should it be needed, and then from there, I think it would be incumbent upon us as a county, I can't commit anybody but myself, but to make my personal commitment that if the taxpayer, this council has voted to put that project on the budget, if this county votes to put that project on the budget, that we're gonna stand up, we're gonna be as good as our word, and we're gonna do everything to make that project a success. So, again, I speak only for myself, but I wanted to make council aware of what I had been brought to my attention. Having said that, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Daniel says, nope. Anybody else? Anybody like to speak for or against this? Hearing no one, unless there's an exception from the county council, I would declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion that this be third and final reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader, is there discussion?
Is that possible that we could defer this to, I think the county administrator's supposed to have a meeting next week with the fire commission? Is that correct, Daniel? Could it be possible that we defer third reading until he has that meeting, and then we vote on it at our next regular meeting?
Whatever council wishes, currently MM Technics had requested October 1st, so we've been on a track to meet that commitment, or to meet that request, but if that's your wishes, we will accommodate that.
Now, MM Technics had agreed to begin with one of the buildings and move to the second building later, is that correct?
So what the lease says currently is that the front barn where the Valentine Museum is, the museum would stay, they would get the remaining portion of the center and the other wing of the barn, and then there's a wing on the back barn that we can make available to MM Technics to make up for the museum staying, but they've been very flexible and willing to work with us.
How soon do they need it?
So their request all along has been for October 1st.
We've had two readings with October 1st being the date, I mean, with this being the third reading so that they could begin, or?
Yes, sir, and electrician has been working, I'm not sure if, I don't think they're quite done, but... Yes, sir. An electrician has been working. I'm not sure if, I don't think they're quite done, but we had a crew in there earlier, I'm sorry, last week, cleaning it out and getting it prepped, and the electricians have been working, I think for about two weeks now, to get it completed with that timeline in mind.
Is there a fairgrounds committee that manages the fairground? Am I correct on that?
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
I had somebody make that request today, and I said, I just don't, I don't know what changes into, the facts and circumstances are gonna be the same two weeks from now. It's still gonna be
The outcome's probably gonna be the same.
A long-term issue of if that gets approved, where that goes. And so I don't wanna rush into anything, but I don't know what's different two weeks from now about what we're doing.
I withdraw.
Okay. And I'm not asking you to withdraw. I just, I had that same conversation. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor by show of hands. All opposed likewise. Got him. Which way did you vote? I'm sorry. You voted, okay, so it would be 6-1 with Mr. Hip voting, let me say, Mr. Sheley. Been a long day. Mr. Sheley voting against. Item number six, ordinance number 09212022, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Newberry PV1 LLC, providing for a payment of fee in lieu of taxes, providing special resource, special source of revenue credits, and authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the Greenwood-Newberry Industrial Park to provide for the addition of property and other matters related thereto. This is the second reading. Is there a motion this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. There have been some changes. I think it'd be good to summarize those changes.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Attorney Ray Jones will provide a summary of those changes for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be quick. Good to see y'all. So since we last met, met with the administrator and the chair and others, and went through some of the business points in the deal. So we've been able to get a minimum payment set, which was an important conversation that we had. We've been able to incorporate some other good sort of eagle-eye changes that Mr. Iglesey, he can't help that he is a lawyer at heart, and so he found some good stuff that we got fixed as well. And so the document is coming along. I do think there needs to be a further discussion of the community benefits portion of this, with the company being very interested in arriving at something that will work for the county, and I think we have some plans to have those discussions. But I would say we're very close, and the company's been very good to work with in their council, and has candidly been able to really take care of the issues that we presented to them in the last turn of the documents. So I would say the most critical piece of that is that there's not a minimum payment in this document. We are also working in, per your request, Mr. Iglesey, a mechanism by which the auditor can be notified each year of the amount of megawatts to make sure we can get the billing correct. So all those things are in process, and will be taken care of before third reading.
Thank you so much for that report. Any questions of him? Now, all those in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Ordinance number 09222022, an ordinance to amend the budget for the fiscal year 2223. Ordinance number 4-7-22 to provide for the amendment of the copying fees at the courthouse to amend those fees from 50 cents to 35 cents per copy. This is the first reading. Is there a motion that they be, this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Reader. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hip. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Why was it changed from? From 50 to where it is now?
From 35 to 50?
Yeah.
My understanding from the council, I mean, from the administrator's report, was the cost of paper, ink, and all the other costs that had gone up for copying.
It went from 25 to 50. Am I correct?
Thirty.
Thirty to fifty?
Thirty to fifty. So now we're dropping back to 35.
So this issue was brought to the finance committee last week. Committee had a discussion about it. Staff's recommendation is to keep it at 50 cents. Committee disagreed and recommends to council to reduce it to 35 cents. So that's how it got back to council.
And as part of that finance committee, Buddy and I were the two in attendance for that finance committee meeting. Part of the thing, when we reduced, or, excuse me, when we increased the price of the copies, supposedly, at that same time, we were gonna have software in place so that people could make copies from their home instead of going to the courthouse to make copies, and that didn't cover all. There was a time period, but it was gonna allow people through the new software to make their own copies. That new software, as with any time, there's no blame for it, but any time you're going to new software, there are problems associated with that, and that software has not gone online yet. And so we've increased the copy price, and the software is not online. So there was, Buddy, you also had some comments.
Well, first of all, I thought it was a knee-jerk decision to go from 30 to 50 to start with. I mean, I thought that was ridiculous. Most of the people that go in that courthouse are people who are citizens anyway, so you may be passing it on from one to another. But I mean, any time you charge a fee, it's a tax. I don't care how you look at it on somebody. When you look at 35 cents, I think that's fair. I think that's reasonable. I talked to a guy who is a resident of this county, who I think he lives on Jolly Street Road, but I talked to him today. He said that he had done a title search for someone, and that the cost of the copying was gonna be more than the cost of his services. It was two, 400 and something pages, and it was gonna be 200 and something dollars. So, I mean, I think when you go to talk about that, I mean, we're not supposed to be getting the windfall off of copiers.
Okay. I think it's fair to also bring up that our clerk of court has done research for us and found comparative numbers that our prices are not out of line at 50 cent a copy with some of our surrounding counties. There are at least one county that's lower, but there are other counties that are equal to or greater than that. So in full disclosure, I wanna, you know, bring that up.
Isn't we compared with our surrounding counties with 50 cents?
Well, I think we were all sent emails identifying that there were at least four counties around us that also had the 50 cents price, and there was one county contiguous to us with 25 cents. Again, I don't know whether or not those counties offer the software so that people can make copies from their computers at home. I don't know, but that was one of the considerations when we originally passed this in the budget, that copies could be made from home, and that is not the case yet. So. But this was just a recommendation passed forward from our
It can be restudied.
Finance committee to include this as an ordinance, because, of course, as Buddy just mentioned, I don't know how widespread this is affecting people, but some people are certainly affected by it, and so if we, any time we delay it, it'll continue to affect them. So.
I think, yeah, I think that would be appropriate, given the circumstances.
Yes.
I checked with our vendor about when we'll be online, and he sent me an email back, because whenever we first started with our computers, we were doing with just numbers, and then we tried to go back and do some. We had to put alpha to get it in the system. And when we did, they were trying to switch it over, download it, and they had to change all our alpha to zeros. So I do have an email from my vendor right here, and they said that the website has been built, and they're re-downloading, and they need to just get everything, be sure all our data is correct, and then probably about the middle of, well, they said the end of the week, but I looked about the middle of October, we should be online. So, and as far as the copies, we have no one that comes in and complains. We have one person that does complain, but he hadn't complained to me. But, you know, we have people come in, give us more money. We have people come in and say, why haven't you gone up before now? But, you know, whatever y'all decide is fine, but I do want to let you know that we will be online, at least by the end of October, or hopefully by the middle of October.
Thank you.
One question before you go, please. You said that we will be online?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be feasible to go ahead and put the price in order now?
Well, you know, I would. I mean, that's up to y'all, but yeah, I would keep, you know, what you're gonna have in line. So, like I say, we do have people that come in, and they'll come in, we'll tell them, well, we were 30 cents. And so they'll come in and give us a dollar, keep the change, but, you know, we try to give it back to them, and they insist we keep it. So it's very few people, and, you know, we have others come in, and nobody's saying nothing. So, anyway.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of this being first reading by show of hands. Those opposed likewise? To go back to 35 cents? Okay. Yes or no? Which way?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, all right, so it would be 6 to 1 with Mr. Reader dissenting. All right. Next on our agenda is ordinance number 09232022, which is an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2223. Ordinance number 040722 to revise the fees collected by the building permit department. This is our first reading. Is there a motion that this would be first reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion?
Once again, I think this, as a committee member of the finance committee, this came out of our last finance committee meeting. Again, Buddy and I were present. We had both received a number of calls from people concerned about the huge step increase in our building permit fees. When we did adopt the ICC building codes, I certainly felt like, and still do feel like, we need to have a standard that applies to everybody. However, there was an option proposed that said, if you can build it for less, if you have either materials available to you or construction labor available to you, for whatever reason, if you can build the building for less than what the ICC cost per square foot would be, then if you can come in with a signed contract and say, this is what I can build it for, and I got a signed contract, then you can use that in lieu of the ICC. Unfortunately, the way it used to be, we paid people and we motivated people to lie to us, because they would just come in and say, whatever I can build it for, you know, we got some unbelievably low numbers that people proposed that they could construct a building for. So we tried to get away from motivating people to lie to us by using a standard. So that was part of it, was to allow that option. The other part of this was to reduce the plan review fee. The plan review fee has always been there. We've never implemented it. So we implemented the plan review fee, and that fee was supposed to be 50% of the permit fee. Well, that's pretty steep for a lot of permits, and so the finance committee recommends that we reduce that plan review fee from 50% of the permit to 25% of the permit.
For residential. As for residential?
Yes, for residential. Thank you for that clarification there. And finally, we also have some house construction, residential construction, where we have large areas of porch space that's unheated, open space, but it's under roof. In the previous way that we were charging permits, that would all be considered square footage and all be charged at the same rate. However, under this ordinance revision we're proposing, we would reduce the unheated space to one-half of the value of heated space when it comes to square footage, and people would be paying for their permit. So that's, that came out of the finance committee. Buddy, do you have anything to?
Well, I just think this is much fair, because when we were using that ICC, I think it is?
ICC, yes.
Code, we were saying that every house is built alike. So if you were somebody who was trying to build on a budget, put vinyl siding on your house, who put vinyl flooring in, who cut all the corners they possibly could, they were getting charged the same rate as somebody who is building a home, who is putting heated marble floors in the house with imported woods to put on the walls or in the flooring or handrails. I mean, you were basically cheating the person who was who was trying to be conservative to start with. The rich person really in this situation was definitely getting the break. And there is a various range of cost on a per-square-foot basis. I mean, you got houses that, you know, probably can be built for $110 a square foot or less, but you got some that's gonna be $300 a square foot. It depends on the material and what you want to put in it. And just using one flat formula for everybody was so unfair, and that was my argument from the start.
The ICC value that we've been using, I think, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're using 148 per square foot, and that's the ICC value. So if you're, if you have a contract to build a residential for less than that per square foot, you can bring that contract in, and the permit will be based on that signed contract amount, if this passes.
And that was what one of the contractors asked for, was the contract price, if they wrote a contract and had it signed, that that would be served as a starting point for the fee.
Any, I lost my, we had a motion in the second, didn't we, in the information? Does this include anything to make this retroactive for those who purchase permits between July 1st and now?
The way it's currently written is it would be prospective and not retroactive.
Okay. I won't spring it on anybody tonight, but I would ask staff to prepare a motion that I'd like to introduce at the next one, that we do it retroactively, that back to July 1, that the person could come in and appeal under the new standard and have that amount readjusted, and even if it means a refund.
Could I ask that that be put in a motion to amend, and then?
That's what I'm asking. Prepare the motion to amend, and I'll do that next meeting. I'll give them time to think. I'm not gonna spring it on them out of the blue on a first reading, but I will do that.
Okay.
I concur with that thought.
I do, too.
I think that's only fair based on the circumstances. Okay?
Do we know how many permits we've had for new homes? Since budget, new budget?
Since July 1 to now, about how many building permits have been issued?
I think we counted it at about 50 today.
50 by the end of third reading.
Okay.
Homes, actual homes?
New homes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, yes. Again, I don't, I don't wanna just bling that out of the blue, because it didn't, we hadn't had a chance to talk about it.
Probably needs some treasurer input.
Yes.
The committee, the discussion about retroactive was, just have that discussion at council. It sounds like there's some good.
Yeah, I think. Seeing enough head nods, I think it needs to have it on the agenda. Okay? And is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Item number nine on our agenda is resolution number 0822, which is a resolution adopting criteria to be used in the which is a resolution adopting criteria to be used in determining premium pay and authorizing payment pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Anglisi, you wanna address that before we vote on it, since it is a resolution?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The resolution out of committee, Finance Committee, again, considered this and is recommending essentially a second round of premium pay, similar to what was issued, I think, back in December, with some change. An increase in five hundred dollars for each of the categories. So a three thousand dollar payment for F T E, law enforcement, public safety. We added communications staff in that category. Public Works, building maintenance and custodial, due to their high potential exposure to COVID-nineteen. Second category is a two thousand dollar payment for administrative support and leadership who worked through the height of the pandemic, and a fifteen hundred dollar payment for volunteers, fire rescue and hazmat, who complied with their incentive programs. And I'll just note, there is a typo in the resolution. Says April twenty-one through twenty-one, April twenty-one, but that was intended to be, and we discussed this at committee, keep the date says April twenty through April twenty-one. So any full-time employee employed during the time of April twentieth, excuse me, April twenty-twenty and through April twenty-twenty-one, and is still employed with the county, would be entitled to this payment.
Okay. What, the very least we can do for our folks, I promise you, sir. Mr. Livingston, did you have something? You look like you were about to say something.
Well, I just feel like this is extremely important to our people who did go above and beyond. We kinda were concerned about how much we could do last time and wanted to kinda protect some of the monies. We're not really true about the ramifications of how it could all be used. I think it's been very clear for a county our size with our funding that we can do what we're, we're trying to do here now. The fifteen hundred dollars for, for our volunteers, which will be still used on the same scale as those who qualify for state income tax breaks, will be the, what will be used to provide for our volunteers. But, you know, I think if you, if you got your ears open, you hear all the time that our volunteers are precious jewel, and it's harder and harder to keep them. This is the least we can do to show them that we appreciate them.
Amen.
One of the things that I'm thinking about, and again, this will be next budget session, but I'm thinking that we need to put a stipend in for our volunteers every year, actually in the budget, as, as to, to just to try to keep that force alive. Because if we ever lose that force, folks, you're talking about a shift of money for paying for full-time paid staff. It will be scary.
Without question.
Yes.
So anyway, just be prepared at the next budget, if I'm here, that's gonna be a suggestion.
Having said that, is there a motion that we approve this resolution?
Some of them.
There are seven motions. We'll give Mr. Livingston the motion, we'll give Mr. Sheedy the second, although everybody down the line, Mr. Reader, second as well, sir. Is there any discussion?
Yes, just one item on here. We are giving money to the volunteers, as Buddy indicated. If you looked at the strict wording of A R P, that they do not allow A R P funds to be given to volunteers. I want to acknowledge our administrator for going far beyond accepting that well-defined area that didn't allow us to distribute funds to the volunteers and went through the National NACO and got some clarification and allowed us to give that money without violating the A R P. That was because he did not accept the simple answer of, no, they're not available for them, so.
Appreciate you bringing that out. Anybody else? Thank you, thank you sounds good, but it don't spend at the grocery store. So we, we hope that this, this sends a resounding message that we do appreciate all that you do. Having said that, all in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Item number ten on our agenda is a resolution oh nine two two for the location and dedication of the memorial honoring all first responders in Newberry County. I understand that to be, we heard that information last time, it'd be at the community hall. Has anything changed on that location? Sheriff Foster, Mr. Anglisi, has anything changed in that?
I talked to, I talked to Mr. Smith this afternoon, and everything's on go, they're just waiting for the stone to come in.
Okay.
Location is fine with the A R P Architectural Review Board, I believe that's what it is. We just said A R P, right?
A R B.
All those.
I just heard A R P. A R B, Architectural Review Board.
I'm rubbing off on other people now, so.
Parts undertaken.
Tried.
So it, it's all to go. All we do is the graces of council to say it's okay to put it there.
Their motion to approve this resolution, motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Mr. Sheed, Mr. Hilt? I'm sorry, is there any discussion? I'm looking at, he's in my peripheral vision and you're not. I'm, I'm good, I'm good. We've got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Again, what a noble thing to recognize all of the first responders who have given their, their life and service to this county.
We're appreciative of y'all and A R B and everybody else, Jimmy Smith, who are all that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And we can give him a certificate or something and get out to, I can sign, maybe have him back and have him present it to him. Item number eleven on our agenda, any appointments that need to be made? I hear none. Item number twelve on our agenda is the lovely Crystal Water, who will make her way to the podium for a discussion and approval of the R F Q for grant writer services.
Thank you. I think you have the memo that I generated along with the scoring sheets for the committee members. We solicited proposals or, or it was a request for proposal in August, and we received ten responses, and I was thankful for that, although the evaluation process does get sort of lengthy and time-consuming. It consist, the committee consisted of myself, the county administrator, his assistant, and the public safety director. We followed up with phone calls with four of the top-ranked firms, which was Thomason-Hutton, M R V Group, Merchants McIntyre Associates, and Global Partners for Fathers and Families, who I'll refer to as G P F F. Based on the information that we gathered in the phone interviews, we recommend that we contract with two of the firms, Thomason-Hutton and G P F F. Each of these firms offer significant services that would be beneficial to the county. Thomason-Hutton offers services specializing in, but not limited to, infrastructure, economic development, roads and bridges, and of course, public safety, which is what our biggest need is, I think, at this time. Their fee on an annual basis would be eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, and that's a not-to-exceed fee, because that's what we asked for in this solicitation. Certainly, they would bill us by the number of hours that they work for Newberry County. G P F F focuses more on community services, technology, and parks and recreation. Their fee is based on an hourly rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and that would be billed at the number of hours that they provide for Newberry County. Each of these firms do have a presence in South Carolina. Contracting with both firms would allow the county to benefit from the available funding sources based on the county's needs. And according to finance, the amount budgeted for the grant services is about ninety-six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Water. What is the hourly rate for the Thomason-Hutton firm?
Let me see if I got that in here.
It's, it's a range, it's actually a range, depending on the staff person.
It is.
I got you.
It ranges.
They did not give that.
So the average, the not-to-exceed was based on an average hourly rate.
Okay. Alright.
So based on this, if we use Thomason-Hutton with their eighty-three, two hundred maximum with a ninety-six thousand in our budget, then that would allow twelve thousand, eight hundred for the G P F F. Y'all would be managing that internally.
And it would depend.
To make sure that we stayed within our total budget.
Absolutely. That's the intention, and the not-to-exceed eighty-three thousand, depending on the year and the activity, they could be doing sixty or seventy thousand dollars work, which would open up more resources for the community service technology firm. So it just depends, you know, public safety will probably rise to the top as a priority. So Thomason-Hutton would likely do a lion's share of the work coming out of the gate. But, you know, if they hang around for a few years, then there may be a little bit more or less than that number available for the second firm.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's a one-year contract initially.
And, and the way the process will work, according to the proposals that we received, and this was pretty consistent, is, you know, once they're approved, they can move forward immediately. So that's one of the pros of moving forward with this. We don't have to go out to market and try to recruit a full-time employee and take the risk of whether or not they're gonna work out. So the process is basically, once they're hired on, you know, if we could get them started tomorrow, they're gonna meet with staff and they're gonna help us with a rubric or a prioritization process. They're gonna meet with public safety, with public works, you know, with, with I T, with Parks and Rec, and with, even with our utilities. I've been talking to Newberry County Water and Sewer about whether they want a seat at the table and would help us with the cost of the grant-writing services. So they'll help us. We'll tell them sort of what we feel like the priority should be. They'll sort of create a calendar for pursuing certain grants in those categories that we've helped prioritize. We have seven areas that were in the R F P, and these two firms help cover all seven of those areas. So we'll meet with them, we'll create a prioritization and a plan. They'll also give us tools during budget process, so we can plan for matching funds that may be necessary if we get a large grant that requires significant match. We'll have to plan for that in budgeting. So all that planning work will happen over ninety days, which will put us close into budget season. And then they will actually, they're actually, some of the ones we talked to on the phone talked about, you know, we're missing deadlines as we speak. We've got some additional deadlines in October, we've got more deadlines in December. So they're ready to rock and roll, and we're ready to get them started.
The federal cycle's October, because we're doing some review now. Okay, is there any other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. What, what does community service, what falls under that umbrella?
Well, I don't have, have their response in front of me, but it could be for Global Partners and for Fathers and Families. When we spoke to them, they indicated that they do address areas that may have poverty-stricken communities in their county, if you will. They may help with.
C D B G grants is a big one that they, and those are grants that were.
Art-related grants.
Parks and trails, parks and recreation tourism grants. But they are definitely, the way they described it is they're, while there are firms that pursue infrastructure and construction and sewer lines and things like that, their focus is on people. So they deliver C D B G grants that will impact a low to moderate-income area of the county. Or they might pursue a parks grant that might create a, a new trail or help with trail maintenance or help with an asset. And they've delivered other after-school programs, especially with a focus on low to moderate-income areas where they're, you know, helping kids who come out of school and maybe they're lock, lock key kids and there's no parent at home when they come home. So they help fund through grants, programming that could be managed through Parks and Rec or, or somewhere else that would provide those after-school services to kids. So they, they went through a few of their community services types of grants that they specialize in.
Where would our local volunteer fire rescue, where would they benefit from this? Is that the public safety in Thomason-Hutton?
Absolutely, and they would be focused on the large grants. Tommy has a new position that we're advertising for. That position is expected to help the chiefs manage their smaller grants, the ones that are regularly and routinely applied for and fairly manageable. So as a consultant, that we're paying a premium focused on helping us find funding for rolling stock, especially updating other equipment for public safety. So we, and actually, that was my biggest question with them, when we talked to them today, is making sure that, because they have all the infrastructure, you know, they're Thomason-Hutton, they're a pretty big engineering firm. But we wanted to make sure that they were ready to pursue FEMA grants and other public safety funding opportunities for, for our fire and rescue.
Alright, is the eighty-three thousand, two hundred, is that for the remainder of the year? Because we had budgeted ninety-six thousand for the entire year. Three months have already gone by.
Right.
Are they, are they gonna be, are they billing us eighty-three thousand, two hundred technically for, for nine months versus what was supposed to be for a twelve-month job?
It's based on hourly.
It's based on the twelve-month fiscal year, so that's their not-to-exceed annual amount.
So basically, what you're saying is we would have money left over at the end of this year, since we are on a shorter.
Unless it, unless the community services grant, you know, uses more than the ten thousand, twelve hundred, that is the difference between.
Well, it's twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars, which means only a hundred and six hours, which is less than three man-hour full-time equivalent, less than three weeks of time for the leftover for G P F F.
Right, there, there may be some unspent funds by the time June thirtieth rolls around.
Any other questions?
Just a statement, this is not what I intended on when we voted for or put into budget a grant writer. I really wanted us to have an in-house grant writer, so we could direct and make sure that we had, we could control it. I do get the fact that, one, it's hard to find people. I do also agree, well, agree or can understand where, at least with this, we don't have to pay benefits to someone, which means we get all of it in, and again, maybe the talent. I guess I say this to say that I'm real, not really, this is not the direction I'm willing, went, wanted to go in. But since it's not an employee per hours right now, I'm willing to go along with it and try it for one year and see what happens. But this is not when I voted in the budget for, this is not what I wanted.
Full-time person, we actually were looking for a full-time person. And why are we talking? Are we talking about one person or two?
That's one of the benefits of going with the consultant is actually, you know, they bring to the table a team of people experienced in estimating and engineering and grant writing. And so we get the benefit of their team by bringing them on. So the, we have, the proposed, the recommendation is to retain both firms, and we get a team in Thomason-Hutton, and we get a team in Global.
Global Partners for Families and Fathers and Families.
So we, it's not just one person looking for us, we have to get a team.
Now, so how are we paying, would we be paying Thomason-Hutton if eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars a year?
That's not to exceed, so it could be less than that, just depends on what volume of grants that works for sales.
I'm willing to try it. Like I said, it's not exactly what I wanted. I guess we can look at it on a performance base. I mean, if they, if within, within the nine-month period, or basically before we get to budget, because that'd be July when we'll have budget. But I wanna see some productivity, I wanna see some grants in-house. If, by that time, if we don't, then that's, I, I will not agree to it for a second year.
And I wanna make sure we don't exceed that ninety-six thousand dollars.
Now, if they bring in a couple million dollars, I might be willing to increase it.
I'm, I'm with you all. I'm willing to give it a try and just see how it works. Sometimes this works well, sometimes it doesn't work well. It's worth an effort to see.
And the thing that Tommy apparently has, I, I was really worried about our local volunteers who have to write their own grants and everything else. If we got somebody that may be able to help coordinate that, I feel a, a little better about this versus in-house, where they could help with all of that. And Tommy, you feel like that's gonna be workable with the person? Okay.
Alright, and I believe, Tommy, I heard you were part of the committee as well, so you're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, hearing that, is there a motion to? Okay. Hearing that, is there a motion to approve these two vendors? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hip, and I got them both right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I think we've kind of beat it around pretty good. All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is the consideration of extending grocery store recruitment incentive policy. Who is going to handle that for us? Rick Farmer. Come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm Rick Farmer, the Director of Economic Development. The grocery store incentives policy that was passed by this council in two thousand eighteen had a sunset clause in it. It basically expired a couple of years later. So what we're asking council to do is simply to extend this policy for an additional couple of years so that we can continue beating the bushes and trying our best to bring a new grocery store to this community. That's the only change in the document is we would extend the window for a couple of more years.
Can you just brief the county council what that was?
Sure. What it is, is it allows grocery stores an avenue to qualify for special source revenue credits, which of course is a way that we can work with a partner industry to reduce their tax burden over time when we decide that there's, you know, a specific public good in this investment. This deal, if someone were to invest a minimum of one million dollars, it could call for a special source revenue credit of sixty percent. So it could cut their tax bill about in half. For somebody investing four million dollars plus, it would include a special source revenue credit of a hundred percent for a few years and then sixty percent thereafter. The, if someone were to invest four million dollars over twenty years in a grocery store, then they could save about a million dollars in taxes over the twenty-year lifetime of the agreement or about fifty thousand dollars per year. That's the nuts and bolts of the.
Is that just for the structure or is that for the inventory?
Well, it only applies to the grocery store structure itself. So if someone were to develop a shopping center with a grocery store as an anchor, it would only apply to the grocery store portion itself and to the physical property. Well, I believe machinery and equipment is also included there too.
I was thinking, I was thinking refrigeration areas, et cetera, were total cost of the building and equipment shelving, et cetera, I think was the, and the reason I brought that out and asked you to explain that because every time I turn around, you're looking on Facebook and you're seeing people saying they're not trying to recruit, you know, they're not trying to, we've got mechanisms out there trying to. Of course, you cannot make a private sector individual locate in your county. But it's not because, and again, this, I will say this too, this is with the city. It's a joint county-city.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's not like we're not trying to work together with each other to bring additional grocery stores. And know that camera might not show, but I'm one that likes food, so I'm going to do anything I can to get food in this county.
Well, and I want to assure this council that we continue to beat the bushes continually to try to wrestle up some new customers in the grocery business.
And do we have a minimum amount of square feet?
One, yes, sir. It was a minimum of ten thousand square feet and a minimum of one million dollars investment.
Which million dollars is not much now.
Yeah. In the building world, a million dollars is not a ton of money, unfortunately.
No, it's not. If someone were to build a full-service grocery store from ground up, they would invest a lot more than a million dollars.
And I think the council, the investment of the property too, if I'm not.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm with Mr. Livingston. I just want everybody to know, we're trying, we're actively.
Absolutely, sir.
Investing the work and trying to get a grocery store here for this county. It's just difficult sometimes. Is there a motion that we do this? A motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Ms. Airwood. I'm going to give her that one. Is there any discussion? Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comments. I don't believe, was there someone? I have one for the public hearing. Is there anyone who signed up for public comments? Would you like to speak for public comments?
I don't have anything to say except that I wish y'all would use your mic when you are talking so that we can hear what you're actually saying.
Thank you so much. I tried to, it's hard to do, but it's so good to see you here, by the way. Anybody, anything? Next on our agenda is executive session. We have three items under section, code section thirty-four dash seventy subsection A of the South Carolina Code of Laws as amended nineteen seventy-six. We have an executive session, a personnel issue, a contractual matter, and an economic development matter. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimous and we move to executive session.
Mr. Hitt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Scurry, is there any discussion, all in favor by show of hands? Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Debrae County Council met an executive session for the aforementioned reasons with no action being taken in executive session. Comments or requests from the county administrator?
Just one update, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm happy to report 114 employees have signed up for paperless pay stubs, so we're over the halfway mark. So if you haven't done it, please do or give us a call, we can help you get it, get that done. That concludes my remarks, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, comments or requests from Council, Mr. Shealy?
No comment.
Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, just want to clarify on the funds that we approved for the volunteers and for, been told that payroll can't be combined with, it has to be, anyway, right now volunteer stipend scheduled to pay out on 10/21 and premium pay for regular people on 11/4.
Okay. I was going to actually ask that question to try to make sure that we got that in. I know a lot of people are starting their little Christmas stuff and all, so that'll be a nice thing for them to receive, so thank you for clarifying that. Ms. Airwood?
Nothing.
Reverend Scurry?
Nothing, ma'am, sir.
Mr. Reader?
Nothing.
No, sir.
Nothing for me. Future meetings, Public Safety Committee has been changed to a to-be-determined date while we're waiting some information from administration and they'll, they'll let us know when you're ready for that, so we'll just delay that. Next county council meeting is October the 5th at 6:00 PM. Economic Development on October 10th at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I won't be here that week, so.
Which week?
That'll be the October 10th.
Okay.
Through the 12th.
Through the 12th, okay. So we have Economic Development on October 10th, Executive Committee October 11th. There is a work session with joint planning and zoning at 5:00 PM on October the 12th, and then there's a work session for County Council on October 12th at 6:00 PM, and then County Council meeting on October 19th at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Livingston, all in favor by show of hands, we stand adjourned and unanimous.
Even being voted.
Whatever, I mean, he's in no real rush.
See y'all.
All right.
We should be all caught in love.